There we go. All right, I'm granting permission to be recorded, rights to my firstborn child's likeness, et cetera. So with that, I'll get my gavel out, make it official. And good afternoon, I'm gonna go ahead and call this session the City of Seidra Woolley Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at approximately one P M. We have one item on the agenda today. This is number C U P two thousand and twenty dash three five two, and it involves a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow the development of five fourplexes on four existing parcels, which would be in addition to the thirteen residential units that have already been developed, consisting of a rental house, an eight-unit apartment complex, a three-unit building, and a one-unit building, we think originally developed around the fifties, I believe. So this would be development in addition to that residential development, and it would occur at the southwest corner of Third Street and Jameson Street. And a conditional use permit is needed to allow further residential development because the subject properties carry an industrial zoning designation. My name is Andrew Reeves. I'm a hearing examiner with Sound Law Center, who the city has selected to hold certain land use application hearings like this one. And today it will be my role to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether the proposal complies with the city's comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances, and the specific criteria for approval of a conditional use permit under section seventeen fifty-six oh six oh of the Seidra Woolly Municipal Code. To that end, I received, I believe, fifteen exhibits in advance of the hearing today. These were labeled Exhibits A through O, and they involve a staff report prepared by city staff, the application materials for today's conditional use permits, as well as materials from two earlier conditional use permits that were applied for related to this property and ultimately expired, information on the environmental review that occurred under our state's Environmental Policy Act, information on the notice that went out in relation to the hearing, the M D N S that was ultimately issued under CIPA, as well as the application itself, information on sort of the site plan, elevations, the plan itself, some review comments from city staff, a comment from the Department of Ecology, as well as one public comment on the proposal that was received in advance of the hearing. So I'll go ahead and admit Exhibits A through O. Should anyone have additional exhibits they'd like admitted into the record? Let me know when it's your opportunity to testify, and I'll go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, our testimony today will be under oath or affirmation. That's because where my decision to be appealed, under our state's Land Use Petition Act, the audio recording of today's hearing, as well as the admitted exhibits, and my decision would serve as the foundation of any such appeal. Then next, the order that we typically follow, and I believe we're gonna follow today, is first I'll swear in planning staff who will give an overview of the proposal and discuss any recommendations that the city has related to the project. Next, we'll go to our applicant representative or applicant team to present any additional information they feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my making a decision. Then we'll see if there are any members of the public interested in testifying, and if so, they'll have that opportunity. When we get to that point in the hearing, if necessary, I'll provide additional detail, but we will check to see if there are folks interested in testifying. And then at the end, if appropriate, I'll turn it back to the applicant team and city staff to respond to any such testimony. So that's the way things are gonna go. I thank everyone for being here. We're gonna mostly keep folks muted unless called upon to speak so that we avoid kind of cross-talk using remote meeting technology. But everyone will have an opportunity, so I want that to be clear. So with that, I believe Ms. McGowan is gonna be presenting on behalf of the city, unless I got that wrong, but let me check with Ms. McGowan.
I believe John was going to be providing the...
Okay, I already screwed that up. So John Coleman will be presenting on behalf of the city, so let's unmute Mr. Coleman.
All right.
Okay, John, you there?
Yep.
All right, I'll swear you in. Do you swear for him to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
Yes.
Thank you. And could you just clearly spell your name for the audio recording and explain your role here at the city?
I'd be happy to. I'm John Coleman, J O H N C O L E M A N. I'm the Planning Director and Building Official for the City of Seidra Woolly.
Great, thank you, Mr. Coleman. Go right ahead.
All right, so you, the Hearing Examiner's done a really good job of giving a summary of what this project is. So I, I don't know, taken...
Did I steal your thunder, John?
Over it, so I don't really need to explain a whole lot of what's going on. Procedurally, you, you were accurate. So there was two previous conditionally used permits that were issued for this. Both of them, one of them expired. So the new owner applied for a conditionally used permit to do a very similar project to this. That conditionally used permit also expired. So this current owner was necessitated to apply for a conditionally used permit. Each time we've reviewed this, we've, we've become more sophisticated and, and been able to understand the complexities of the issue and what, what things staff and the public might need to know for the development part of this. So you'll notice through the procedural history, there's been more and more detail to the, to the requested conditions on it. So I'll, without going over those in detail, what, what we're really intending to do is try to allow this application to, to go forward. Staff has made a recommendation for approval with conditions. Really, the intent is this property has been used as residential for some time, and at one point, there was more residential on this property, and, and there, those buildings became dilapidated and over the years removed. In fact, as a part of a condition for the previous conditionally used permit, they're required to remove one of the buildings, and that has been taken care of. So right now, the only buildings on site are actually used and maintained as single-family resident, or not single-family, excuse me, they're used as multifamily residences. And without having, I don't know if the Hearing Examiners had a chance to, to visit the site, but the property is in fairly good maintenance. There's, there's not the issues of dilapidated structures that there used to be in the, on the property prior to this hearing, prior to this conditionally used permit request. There was a gas station at the corner, and you may have noticed in the application materials a request from a local property owner asking about the conditions of the soil in that area. So that will, at the time of building application, we'll look at that closely and make sure that there's a Department of Ecology approval for the tank removal, and if there was any issues with that, make sure that there's a, no further action, N F A, from ecology if there was any spill. And just, we'll, we'll make sure that anything that's built over that, that the soil is ecology standards.
Okay.
But that's not something that we do at the conditionally used permit process. That's something that we do at the time of development application.
Sure, so at this, at this point, I'm, I'm addressing whether the use is appropriate, but then the finer-tuned details, such as soil remediation, et cetera, would be reviewed by you in your capacity as Building Official and Planning Director further, as building permits are being reviewed. Is that accurate, Mr. Coleman?
Yes, we, yeah, we don't, we don't require that the soil be remediated at the time of a conditionally used permit because it's, while it's a land use application, it doesn't actually change anything on, on the, the property. So when we receive applications for actually physical change to the property, then we'll make sure that those soil remediation, if necessary, it has been taken care of appropriately.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you there. Did you have anything further, Mr. Coleman?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, go, go right ahead.
So as I said, this property's been traditionally used as a residential multifamily. So the city's been, you know, we've recommended that it does be allowed to be used for additional residential, with the caveat that it be developed more or less like a typical multifamily development. So because this is the industrial zone, there is a, you know, there are no standards for how development occurs in that industrial zone definition. However, in the residential fifteen zone, there are standards for multifamily development. That is, the R fifteen zone is what the typical apartment zone in Seidra Woolly. So what you'll see in our recommendations is that we've asked that all of the issues, such as parking, recreation area, open space, mimic those of the R fifteen zone because this prop, this project is essentially a project that would happen in the R fifteen zone. So this is not anything, we don't see this as an onerous quest. This is just, this is how apartments are developed in Seidra Woolly, so please use the standards of the R fifteen zone. So you'll see that we've requested that parking standards per the R fifteen zone be implemented, recreation area requirements for the R fifteen zone be implemented, open space requirements for the R fifteen zone be implemented, et cetera. The site plan submitted, which is Exhibit G, the applicant was kind enough to put together a well-put-together site plan. And we had requested that the site plan show not specifically how the development's going to fully be developed, but said, you know, kind of a hybrid of showing that all of the required amount of parking for the proposal can be shown on site, and the recre, amount of recreation area can be on site, and open space, drive lanes, fairly close to department standards. So this site plan is just intended to show that everything can fit on site. It's not specifically the approved site plan. There'll probably have to be changes based on, you know, like parking lot, parking stall dimensions may not be completely accurate on this. It's just hard to tell by scale. Road driveway widths, we did ask them to address all of these, and I think we're pretty close, but there's some, there's some details in here that probably need to be shown in more detail and will need approval. So thus, I just wanted to be clear that this is not the approved site plan for what it's gonna look like, but this is pretty darned close.
Right, so I, again, I'm not addressing a binding site plan. That's not what my role is. I'm looking at the general use. So the site plan that the applicant has prepared is a preliminary site plan that at least shows, you know, that all of these various parking, access, landscaping, recreational, that it's possible to, to fit all of this on these four properties, four parcels, or one larger property. And the various pieces may ultimately move somewhat or change somewhat, but, but my particular analysis is whether the use is appropriate, and this is a way to ensure we know that there's adequate parking, et cetera. Is that pretty good analysis, Mr. Coleman? Does that make sense?
And I just wanted that to be on record and possibly in the findings, just so, you know, there's no confusion if they sell this project or something that no one down the line believe, is under the understanding that, you know, the site plan in here is giving, being given the stamp of approval through this process.
Yep, I will put it in the findings. I made a note to that effect.
Okay, so I should probably just move on to our staff recommendation. As I said, we do, staff does recommend approval of this conditionally used permit. I go in our staff recommendations saying that it's conditionally used permit two thousand and sixteen oh one, but it's actually conditionally used permit two thousand and twenty-three fifty-two. Apologize for that.
Okay.
So as requested by the applicant, a maximum number of thirty-three units is our first request. Offsite parking is going to be required, but is not counting towards the required parking. All parking shall be required, all required parking, as shown in seventeen sixteen of the Seidra Woolly Municipal Code, shall be, shall be accommodated on site. Condition recommended, condition number three addresses the fact that, you know, it's not a residential zone, so there's no standards for how much parking is required per a project, so we included that as three. Similarly, for landscaping, under condition number four, twenty percent of the site plan, the gross site shall be landscaped. We're requesting that the site plan show all the required landscaping, parking, recreation areas for the entire development. The outdoor recreation area, as consistent with chapter seventeen thirty-eight, shall be provided. Street right-of-way improvements shall be completed on James and Third Street, as approved by the city engineer, and that, that, that would be required anyway. That's not really a condition that were anything different than what's already allowed. Just putting it, stating it very clearly for the applicant. Because this is a, an apartment that, there's often a request for signage, so I think signage in eight, and that is pretty much a holdover from the original application, original conditionally used permit. Approval. Obviously, you need to comply, obtain permits for the construction and site development, follow their design standards, and they impact these for the current rate adopted by the, by ordinance at the time. The building permit is issued. There's also the CIPA that we issued in September. Applicants shall comply with those, and that should be included as Exhibit A of the document. Like to include that lighting shall be shielded. This is adjacent to our residential area, and so put that in there. Some of these, as I said, are held over from a time when our code wasn't as clear about these things, so I, they're still being shown in here. The, because there's four parcels here that are owned currently by the same person, but in theory could be transferred to different entities, and that's often what, what owners of such facilities like this will do is they'll have four different buildings, for example, on four different lots that they can finance separately, but they, they want them on separate lots. What we're requiring is that this really be treated as a single development. We're not really too concerned about who owns which parcel as long as the easements are in place and all of the utility corridors are addressed, and it's known that parking for each, for the entire development can be on any of these four parcels. And that's addressed in the easement language of, of the properties that was done as a, a, not a short plot, but a, a boundary line adjustment several years ago. So there's a lot of easements in place. Sure that that's all taken care of, but again, we just wanted to state it clearly that, you know, all of the, if there are separate owners of these four parcels, they all have to allow the users of each, of each lot access across each of the other lots.
Got it. So if, if ultimately the front right parcel, the north, I guess it'd be the northeast parcel, was sold to someone else, we want to ensure that it doesn't change all the access rights that, that currently exist across the, the property in its entirety. I mean, the easy thing, obviously, would be a B L A to just make this one property, but I get what you're saying. The city's not requiring it because, especially with rental multifamily properties and multiple buildings, there could be finance reasons why it's beneficial to keep things separate. But we want to ensure that all the easements make it as if it were one large property, no matter what happens in the future. Is that a good way of thinking about it, Mr. Coleman?
Exactly. So for example, Track One, they'll, they'll have, looks like six parking spaces on it and thirteen units. So, you know, they can't accommodate all of the parking on Track One. Most of the parking's gonna be on Track Three, it appears. So, and then there's no parking on Track Two. So it just needs to be clear that everybody, all of the units on this building have access to the parking, and all their utility easements going across all, all of it to make sure that nobody, no future property owners try to keep other tenants off of their property.
Got it. Be clear, everything gets treated as if this was one large, un-divided property, no matter what occurs in, in terms of property ownership in the future.
And so that's how our conditions were worded to, to allow for that. If there's any ambiguity about that, then the Hearing Examiner ability to clarify.
Okay.
And I think I've spoken enough about this project. Everyone understands the intent. The planning is supportive of it. As long as the conditions are in place to address the issues I discussed.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I think you anticipated the vast majority of questions I had. For instance, I said, does the city require a B L A to eliminate property lines? Who owns the property? How's that work? Is Exhibit G the current site plan? All such questions have already been answered, so I thank you. Let me just make sure I didn't have any further questions. Oh, you answered that already as well. Okay. Just in terms of, because I always ask, but has the Comprehensive Planner zoning code been amended in any way which would impact this proposal since the application was deemed complete back in March of two thousand and twenty-one?
No, in fact, there's been no changes to the comp plan since that time.
Okay, or zoning, I assume.
Or zoning.
Okay, and then just to help me wrap my head around the location because I did not drive up to see the site. If we were in person, I would have gone by, but I'm looking at page three of the staff report, Mr. Coleman. And I've got an over, sort of, sort of overview photo that shows residential development, it looks like, across the street, across Third Street. But I was wondering, the left-hand side of the top of the page has various colors designated. Could you just tell me what the various colors are on that page, what the designations are?
Okay, so to the north of the property is the Seidra Woolly High School. So the green represents public sign, public zone.
Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead, John.
All right, but, and then the, the yellow is R seven zone, the residential seven. Is most of, single-family and duplex.
And the gray that's shown is industrial, I assume?
Correct.
But both the properties to the south and west are currently undeveloped?
Uh, correct. They, they used to be, that used to be Seidra Woolly Mill property. Is no longer an active mill.
Sure. Okay, and then you had just, you had just pointed out, oh, go ahead, John.
If you'd like, I can share my screen and show you.
Uh, sure, go ahead. And while you're setting that up, Mr. Coleman, you had just referenced that this, oh, there, that's a nice overview of the whole area. You had just referenced that the residential right across Third Street has an R seven designation. Am I correct in thinking the city would like the R fifteen zoning standards to be applicable to this property because it's a higher level of multifamily housing that's being proposed? Is that an accurate assumption?
Yes, this is, yeah, this is not a residential seven-type development. So I just drew a little, drew a little yellow spot over the, roughly over the area in question, project area. So I'll remove that, and you can, you can see to the west is the former mill, to the south is the former mill, to the east is a standard residential subdivision, historically planted in the late eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds. And then to the north is the Seidra Woolly High School gym.
And I believe I saw this in the earlier photo, but there's already a crosswalk clearly designated at the corner of Third and Jameson, right?
Yes.
And you had mentioned the need for right-of-way improvements, but just to clarify, is there, would there be a requirement for sidewalks? Or do sidewalks already exist in this area?
The right-of-way improvements would be curb gutter sidewalk and, and street parking as, as there's room for it. There is no sidewalk along this area. You can see there is a sidewalk pad at the corner, but it doesn't, you, eastward, it doesn't continue westward nor south.
Okay, so there, we would at least get sidewalks in front of this parcel, and then as further development occurred, side, additional sidewalks would be added. Is that the basic concept?
So the, the, the frontage along this parcel would be developed with curb gutter sidewalk and half-street improvements, we call it, on their side of the road. And then just for the length of their property.
Right, no off-site improvements are, are being required or considered appropriate by staff in its review of the proposal, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Well, I think that answered the questions I had for you, Mr. Coleman, unless you have anything further you wanted to share?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, then, I will go to the applicant team, which is identified as J Manus, but I believe that, that as I put it out in the beginning, is our identified applicant representative. Sorry, let me find my notes here again. This is Ginger Pennington, and I'm showing her in the upper corner, but if we can unmute them, they might need to hit unmute on their computer as well, but... And Nicole, it's identified as J Manus, but if you can unmute them, there we go. Okay, and do you swear for him to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And could you spell your name clearly for the audio recording and explain your role with the project?
Ginger Pennington, G I N G E R, and Pennington, P E double N I N G T O N.
Thank you.
And I'm acting on behalf of the owner. I'm the applicant.
Okay. Okay, this is your opportunity to provide any additional information you feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of me making a decision on the proposal.
Actually, I believe the staff has done a comprehensive package. I think it's all pretty clear, and if you don't have any questions, we are supportive and, and happy to go forward with this project.
Okay, yeah, and you tracked me and Mr. Coleman's conversation throughout, obviously, and that issue of essentially in some jurisdictions or in... that issue of essentially in some jurisdictions or in some situations like this, eliminating property lines is required. Here, the city is not requiring that, but you understand the idea that if ownership changed in the future, we, we just want to ensure that were this to be developed as proposed, there would be no impact on these duplexes and the parking, et cetera. Did that all make sense?
Yes, we'll need to put easements in place.
Okay. And then the, I assume you had an opportunity, Ms. Pennington, to review the staff report prepared by city staff?
I did.
And all the conditions that have been recommended look reasonable, and you feel confident that your client can comply with those recommended conditions were I to approve this proposal?
Yes, we went over them before the meeting, for the hearing.
Great. Well, I, I actually don't have any further questions for you. I, Mr. Coleman, as you noted, answered or had a comprehensive review, and city staff prepared a thorough staff report. So all the questions I had have been answered. So nothing more I need from you. I think it, did, did you have anyone else on your team you were hoping to call on?
No, we're good.
Okay, and is Tony Freeland, I couldn't, was he part of your team, or was he independent? I couldn't quite tell who Mr. Freeland was.
He's part of the team.
I, I need not call on him. So at this point, then, we'll go ahead and see. I have one other person that has signed on, someone identified as Mallory Marley or Mallory Marley, and we'll see if this person has any interest in testifying. So Ms. McGowan, there we go. Hi, were you interested in testifying today?
Um, no, I'm just interested in the hearing.
Just watching. Okay, well, thank you for being here.
Thanks.
So, Mr. Coleman, based on that, I suspect you probably don't have anything further to add, but I want to give the, the city an opportunity just in case.
I think we've had our opportunity, and that's all we have to say. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Well, I don't often get to do this, but based on what I've seen, the thoroughness of review that occurred, the testimony I've heard here today, I don't see any issue with ultimately approving the proposal with the recommended conditions of approval. So it is my intention to do so in the next 10 business days. Obviously, we've got a holiday coming up that'll impact that, so looking at my calendar, just so we're all on the same page. With Christmas, I suspect my decision would be out the 28th or 29th. But it is my intent to approve the proposal with the recommended conditions of approval, with any clarity in terms of language that I deem appropriate, but nothing, no major significant changes. So that is my intent. I thank everyone for being here and participating in the process. I wish everyone safety, good health, and happy holidays as we move forward. And with that, I think we can end today's hearing. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, congratulations. And at this time, we'll go ahead and stop the recording and the meeting for all. Thank you.